Thank you all for being here. Let me tell you about the format for tonight. It'll be in three parts. Elena Cadvani and I will ask the first series of questions. To make sure that we move along swiftly, we'll give the candidates a limited time, which we'll tell them about, to answer each question. The time limit depends on the nature of the question. Some can be answered quickly, some will need a little bit more thought. In the second section of the debate, I'm really excited that the student journalists will be asking their questions. They've prepared a question for each of the publications, and we'll do two rounds of that. And then, the last section will be audience questions. I'm sure some of you are asking, "How do I submit my question?", which itself is a good question. There are volunteers from Project Safety Net who are roaming the room. If you would like a card and a pen, or if you have a card to return, just raise your hand. One of the volunteers is over here, in the crowd. So one caveat about the questions from members of the audience: they may come with a certain point of view. And I encourage the candidates to feel free to address that point of view, take exception to it if you disagree with it, but in the end, of course, we ask that you actually answer the question. It's not likely that we'll get to all the questions that are being submitted, but please know that the candidates are here afterwards to talk with all the members of the public, and they're hosting, along with their supporters. They're hosting numerous events between now and November 6th, Election Day. If you want to hear this debate again, we're video recording it. It's not being livestreamed, but it will be on PaloAltoOnline.com by the end of the weekend, as well as youtube.com/PAWeekly, which is the Weekly's YouTube account. All right. With that, we hope tonight will be informative and helpful to you as you decide which two candidates to elect to the school board. With that, Elena Cadvani will ask the first question. Do you want to address the order?
Sure.
We will be going left to right in answering the questions for the first question, and then we will move to the second-most person from the left. So we are rotating who gets to answer the question first.
Okay, well, thank you all for being here so much. In recent years, the school district has been through many controversies, many of which generated intense community angst and arguably prompted a near-clean sweep of top district administrators, including the sudden resignation of the previous superintendent last fall. What is your take on the state of the district today versus four years ago? And we'll give you one minute to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Cadvani. The state of the district, as compared to four years ago, I do believe is stronger than we were at that point. We've made incredible progress, although there's still more to be done in the area of mental health and wellness for our student body, and we've also made incredible progress towards compliance with federal laws such as Title IX. So I do believe that we are stronger than we were four years ago in many ways, and in many ways, we still have a lot of work to do, including areas of mental health and achievement gap.
I agree with Stacy's summary. I think that we have made tremendous progress over the last four years. The question that Elena asked was about senior leadership, and I have a lot of confidence in the senior leaders that have come to the district. I think the new superintendent is a strong manager and strong leader, which is what the district needs. We just hired one of the best chief business officers in the state to provide crucial fiscal leadership. We have a new deputy superintendent and new HR director, who I think that she brings tremendous skills to the job. And I think we've also made great progress in the areas of mental health and compliance. I think the board operates much more effectively than it did in the past, so I'm proud of the progress that we've made over the last four years.
I will echo that we have made great progress over the last four years with respect to mental health and wellness, with respect to Title IX reporting. Of course, there's always more progress to be made, and we need to keep working at it. One of the areas that I think we've done a great job of is really shoring up our governance processes in the district, which is critical to actually being effective. We can have all the great ideas that we want, but we can't really execute them unless we have a strong structure to put them in place. And by hiring Dr. Austin, I think we've done just that. And from all appearances, he's been putting together a strong team within the district that will help the board execute his vision. Things going forward that we can do to continue on that track include hiring a general counsel, which is going to be paramount to being a proactive district, as well as implementing an office of the ombudsman, which I think goes to the heart of the question about really building trust between the community and the district.
Thank you. Just to start off, I think I'd like to say that probably all of us are here, and all of you are here, because we believe in public education. That's why we're sending our children to our public schools. And while we have a lot to be proud of here in Palo Alto Unified, a lot to be thankful for, wonderful community, look at the support here, wonderful students, wonderful teachers, I think we can also still acknowledge that there are issues and there are problems that need to be addressed. Ignoring those problems or issues won't get us closer to fixing them. So in comparison to four years ago, I would say that we were in the midst of an OCR investigation four years ago, which went from 2013, June 2013, to 2017. And in terms of the state of the district now, we also recently went through two sexual assault incidents that came out through the media. We also had an additional funding request for our special education program in Palo Alto Online. It said that additional funding request was because our program was not in legal compliance. Does that mean stop?
I think that there might be some progress, but I think the change in personnel is not the progress itself, it's just a chance to create progress. And that now that we have a change in staff, we have open space and an opportunity to create change, not that this is already the change needed.
Our next question... academic rigor versus balance. Palo Alto is duly known for its rigorous academic culture and the toll that a heavy force load and high expectations can take on students' mental health. What is your assessment of the current balance in the district between providing academic rigor and programs to support student well-being? And what step would you, as a school board member, take to ensure students are challenged but also emotionally healthy? We'll give this one minute, and start with Ken Darber.
The wrong way to think about the relationship between student well-being and academic achievement is that we have to trade off one against the other. In fact, healthy, well-rested, happy students are good learners. So one of the things that I am really pleased about is that I think the conversation in Palo Alto has changed around this issue in particular. And so I'm really less interested in terms of student well-being and talking about balance than I'm talking about how we can make our schools work better for our students, which means making them work better in terms of their learning and their well-being. One issue that I have particularly focused on in the past is sleep, eliminating zero period at gun academic classes so that 250 students have a chance to sleep in. One thing that I think we still need to work on is homework and homework load, where there's a fair amount of evidence that while we've made progress, we still have a long way to go in producing homework loads that really support student well-being.
The issues of academic rigor, I think, is really sort of a red herring, but what we should be talking about is how challenging our students is not mutually exclusive with supporting our students. We can and we should have an environment that both challenges students to really focus in on depth of knowledge, to understand material, and to really find engagement in the learning process, while at the same time making sure that we're supporting, you know, we're supporting them and also we're supporting their learning so that they don't feel as if they are becoming a victim of too rigorous of an environment. And so one of the things we need to do is continue having frank discussions about mental health, about issues like weighted GPA and Lanning, things that don't only implicate mental health but also equity, and continue having these discussions to make sure we are always building an environment that is going to support our students.
I agree with both Ken and Shawna that it's not necessarily a choice between the two, and I think that we want to support our students regardless of where they are on the academic spectrum. I think many of us, most of us who are here tonight, probably moved here because of the excellent public schools, and we want to retain our public schools as being excellent academically. We want to support students regardless of where they are on the academic spectrum. So we want them to be challenged, we want them to be emotionally healthy, we want them to receive an excellent education and an excellent experience.
I think the main issue I have with this problem is that most of the focus is on the academic rigor and providing support to those who are the high achievers, and that I think we need to look at the whole system because it's a public school, that everyone needs to be supported, whether it's the people in special education, whether it's the people in low financial income housing that are going to the school that might not have access to supplies. And I think that is another area of support that we need to look at that's not really being addressed.
I'd like to build on what Alex said because it really touched on, I think, the heart of the matter here. Obviously, it's not, we're not trading off academic excellence, academic rigor with student well-being. The way I think of it is like three legs of a stool or a tripod, where one leg of it is the academic achievement, where the student is in some ways an empty vessel, and the teachers and the parents are pouring in the learning, and the student's job is to crank out the grades or the GPA. But obviously, that doesn't make a happy, whole, healthy child. The second leg is, is the student involved and connected to their community and their family? And not in a check-off-your-100-hours-community-service sort of way, but in a way that makes them feel the self-esteem. That's the third leg. It turns out what Alex referred to regarding students who are part of the inclusion or special education program is also similar with students of under-resourced families, where they might not have the opportunity to volunteer and be involved in the community to the same degree. But all three work together to a happy, healthy, and whole child.
I want to ask about staff turnover. So the turnover of district staff, including administrators and principals, has been significant over the past few years. Some in the community have seen this as a positive sign, a way to bring in the best qualified new staff, while others have viewed it as unnecessary turmoil and a sign of an unhealthy district culture and supportive of staff. How do you view the leadership turnover, and what, if anything, needs to be changed going forward? We'll start with Shawna.
I think the first thing that needs to be done when there is a high level of turnover is look at management, and we've done that. We've hired Dr. Austin, we've hired a new chief budget officer, and they've put together a strong team. And as I said before, building those processes in the district to make sure that not only is there a viable chain of reporting from all the way up to the superintendent, but there is a viable chain of trust is the most important thing to building a district where turnover is low. The second part is really emphasizing that compliance is not at odds with supporting teachers, because I think that's something that we've seen over the last four years, and that's a feeling that has been out there. But I think right now, we can say that compliance and supporting teachers are not at odds. You can create a healthy culture of compliance, and in fact, when you create a culture of compliance fundamentally, it's going to be because you're supporting teachers and administrators and following the law. So creating that culture from the top down while supporting the teachers and administrators is the way we're going to solve that problem.
Regarding the staff turnover, we certainly have had some exceptional and extraordinary events that happened lately. Partly, that's probably what you're referring to. However, looking back at past articles in the Palo Alto Weekly, which I did in the past, a year ago or so, the Palo Alto Weekly was writing about turnover that was taking place back in 2016. It had an interesting diagram about all the different turnover that was taking place at that time. And our fellow candidate and board president, Ken Darber, was quoted in that article saying that turnover is a natural event in any organization, not reflective of anything in the working conditions here in Palo Alto Unified. So I think it is a natural event. Obviously, we want to try to stem the turnover, but the extraordinary events that took place recently, of course, were a result of some extraordinary conduct that took place.
I think there's two issues with turnover. There's the management turnover and the teachers leaving because they don't like the environment here. And so I think with the management turnover, I think it's good to get some of the inflexible ideals out and bring in more open-minded individuals to help push forward the agenda of the school. And I think for the teachers, I think we need some sort of system to help bring teachers into the school district and keep them here, because I know two of my science teachers in Pali have already left the district within a couple of years of me taking their classes because it wasn't a good environment.
I think that the high level of turnover at the administrative level this past year, 80%, is both necessary and unfortunate, that yes, we've hired this new superintendent and high-level staff, but that's just the beginning. That's obviously not the complete solution so that we don't undergo this amount of turnover again. Their job is not just to be hired. Their job is also to get to know the principals and the teachers and the parent community and the student community, and work together so that we are supporting one another and that we aren't having to repeat this cycle of turnover. Based on my experience of volunteering in the PTA at the schools, I've seen that there's this lifeblood of support that makes the district run. And sometimes that support is not really connected with what's happening at the district office. So I will work closely, if elected, to ensure that we are supporting one another in a way that won't force us to end up in this amount of turnover again.
Some turnover is definitely part of any large organization, and we've seen that some turnover, I think, is a healthy reaction to the desire for accountability and high performance among particularly our senior leadership. Putting students first really means making sure that we have leadership that is really working for students. I will point out that across the organization, and particularly in the ranks of teachers, that recruitment and retention has not changed over the years, and that recruitment and retention in Palo Alto is, we are certainly exceeding the standards of districts across the state. Our retention, our loss of teachers is only about half the rate of typical across California, and that's because we have an attractive district to teach in, and we have a great community that supports education in our schools.
So a follow-up question for any candidate to answer in 30 seconds. Not everyone has to answer. How can the board smooth over some staff's distrust of the board?
We set the tone, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to do that.
Oh, okay, great. Can you name out? Okay, how can the board smooth over some staff's distrust of the board? And not all candidates have to respond, just 30 seconds for whoever wants to respond.
How staff can smooth over the distrust from some...
Staff members.
...of the board community. I think that in addition to hiring and firing superintendents and setting policy and oversight, we also set the tone for the district, and I believe in open transparency in our community, and that that will help reestablish that level of trust.
Yeah, I mean, I think everybody in the organization wants to work in an organization that is well-functioning, well-managed, and is compliant. So I think the right thing to do is for the board to continue to work to make sure that that's true of this organization.
As I said, I think that confidence in the management structure is key, and that means that we need to make sure the roles of the board and the roles of the district are clearly defined, so that the board can do the board's job, which is oversight and vision, and the district can do the district's job, which is the implementation of that. And when those two bleed together, then that builds mistrust because there's no clear reporting and no understanding of what the expectations are.
As my fellow candidates have said, I think the board's role is to represent its constituents and also to exercise oversight over the district. And so I think in some ways that the board has exercised some oversight over the district. If that has resulted in some distrust, that's unfortunate.
I think one thing that the board needs to do is to hold the staff accountable, and that if the staff are not accountable and the district board doesn't do anything, because ultimately, the board is responsible for everything that happens, then they're going to lose trust in the board.
The next question is about the achievement gap. The school board approved in May a two-year equity plan that explicitly focuses on how to improve outcomes for the district's approximately 2,000 African-American and Hispanic students. Prior to adoption, one parent told the board, "I have no more patience to see the same movie playing over and over again for these kids." The achievement gap has resisted comprehensive progress in Palo Alto for years. What's one concrete action that you would advocate for to change that? Kathy Jordan.
From my perspective...
One minute.
One minute, okay. To make a dent in equity, I think everyone agrees that early intervention is key. There's a quote from a Stanford professor, "California's lag in academic achievement arises before children even enter the schoolhouse door." It's a college readiness report showing that elementary school students' proficiency scores on standardized tests in this elementary school predict their ability to graduate from high school with A through G requirements. So while early intervention is key, there's also consistent support and services that are needed after that early intervention, backed by testing, monitoring, and supervision. Programs such as the district's springboard to kindergarten could help, possible expanding that program. Testing is also needed, tutoring, not just in high school, but starting at kindergarten and continuing all the way through. So earlier intervention and consistent support and monitoring could make a huge difference to education equity.
I'm not particularly familiar with this topic, and I think it's better to do research and then come back than to just talk about it without having an understanding. But one thing I'm not sure whether is already being addressed or not is providing access to equal supplies, because I think a lot of the high-achieving kids have access to a lot of supplies, whether through the district or outside the district, with tutors or materials. And so I think some form of access to supplies like that would be very beneficial.
From my work on Project Safety Net and particularly the developmental assets, we've learned that students' self-esteem is particularly important to their academic achievement, and this is one of the examples where parent education and working closely with the families is essential. We've seen that in the Minority Achievement and Talent Development Report. And as a board member, I would strongly champion working closely to provide those opportunities and ensuring that car pools are provided when needed so that students can participate in after-school enrichment activities, and elevating the importance that every child is an important part of the fabric of this community, that inclusion means all, does not discriminate based on race, or socioeconomic, or ability, or anything else. These students, these families are our community. It's not a trade-off of us versus them, and I would champion that message, that we need to work together in a sustainable way to close this achievement gap.
Stacy, I'm sorry. One quick follow-up to that. One quick follow-up for Stacy. So when you say that the parents are important and need to be involved, would you be doing outreach to these parents? How would you bring them in closer to where they are now?
It would include a parent ed component that's been successful in some schools in East Palo Alto, for example. It's very mandatory in highly effective special education programs as well, that the parents are part of the fabric of the solution, that the school can't do it in isolation and a family can't do it in isolation. But together, we should champion that from the top of our district.
The district has implemented many of the recommendations of the Minority Achievement and Talent Development Task Force, including actually family engagement specialists who work to bring families into closer connection with the schools, folding kindergarten, which we implemented a couple of years ago, supporting dreamcatchers. One recommendation that we really haven't made progress on is accountability for school leaders, site principals, for moving achievement in their schools. And so I think that that's an extremely important lever for making change, is to develop metrics and to hold site leaders accountable for lifting up students in their schools. It is certainly true that under-resourced students in Palo Alto, low-income students in particular, suffer the largest opportunity gap, and those really, in a sense, are the canary in the coalmine in terms of the effectiveness of our education. And so I think holding site leaders accountable for their education is an important step.
So the goal of a public school system is to provide education to all of its students, regardless of income, regardless of ZIP code, regardless of background. And it's great to say that we want to achieve excellence for all of our students, and I want that, we all want that, but why don't we first focus on the education part, which is providing education to all of our students? Because of the 2,000 people that Jocelyn mentioned, 25% of them are college and career-ready by the time they graduate. That means we have hundreds of students who are not college and career-ready upon graduation. They're not even getting the education part of excellent education. So what are some concrete things that we can do? Well, we can increase pre-kindergarten options. As Kathy said, between kindergarten and third grade, that achievement gap begins to grow, and after that, it's really hard to build that back up. So looking at Greendale as an example, growing that pre-K program to every school to make sure that students are having the opportunity that they need to actually have the same learning as every other student in this district, and really fulfilling our goal as a public education system.
I have a last question about youth well-being. Elected board members will start their term in 2019, a decade since the Palo Alto community came together to collectively prevent youth suicide and promote youth well-being. What continues to be a challenge for the community in this work? And we'll give you 30 seconds, starting with Alex.
So I think a big part of this problem relies on the stigma of mental health, and that the first thing you need to do is raise awareness of the problem and get people to think about, you know, some of the signs or some of the things that they can do to help. And that, I think, once you get that, it's much easier to push forward anything else.
I talked to a group of teenagers about this today because they were in my house. And while we have increased our counseling staff, a lot of that funding has had to come from Pi. Obviously, we don't get enough funding from the district to do what we need to do, and students are falling into the gaps. The wellness centers are just a start, and primarily, we need to involve the students a lot more, not just at high school, but starting at middle school and maybe even earlier, because educating students about their own well-being has to resonate with students. Thank you.
I encourage you to, since I only have 30 seconds, to go read the Supportive School Environment's part of the Project Safety Net Plan, P8, which really focuses on the life of students at school in some mundane areas like homework and test and project stacking and counseling. And those are areas where I think we can still make large improvements in student well-being, and those are the areas that I've been focusing on the last four years and I intend to focus on in the next four years if I re-elected.
I was here a decade ago when the community came together, and I was a part of that, and I've been inspired to see what we've done as a community over the last 10 years to address the issues of mental health and wellness. I think we've done an excellent job in starting down that path with wellness centers at both high schools, which we should be expanding out to the middle schools as well, putting a psychologist at every school, working to implement a homework policy so that students are not grappling with stress, and then expanding innovations like the flipped classrooms and blended learning to reduce that homework and bring the focus back on learning through engagement in the process. You know, one of the things that we really need to do that was mentioned before is to have a frank conversation with the community about mental health.
One of the things I recently learned about mental health, I'm sorry, about student wellness, that surprised me was that just as many mental health service referrals are happening in the elementary schools as in the high schools. And that surprised me. Again, it seems that early intervention could make a key difference here, along with continued monitoring and support and supervision of our students. We all know that the level of stress ratchets up from elementary to middle to high school. And as Ken mentioned, the homework loads, Schoology could definitely provide some assistance with that in terms of helping us evaluate those homework loads. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move into our student journalist section. And I'm particularly excited about this. One by one, they will be addressing the candidates at the microphone in the front. The first student journalist is Ujwal Srivastava from the Campanile at Palo Alto High School.
Ujwal Srivastava from the Palo Alto Campanile. So the district received a letter on August 10 that threatened a lawsuit against the district over alleged violations of the Voting Rights Act. However, no reportable action was taken on it, and the letter was not discussed or disclosed until September 4, that too in a closed session. Even then, the agenda of this meeting improperly noticed the potential litigation, and throughout the process, no public announcements were made. As journalists, students, and citizens of the community, we should have the right to know what is happening in our schools. So what steps would you, as a board member, take to increase transparency in the board decisions and processes?
Let's start with Stacy Ashland. And I have only 45 seconds.
Thank you. You're absolutely right that it's essential that students and the community understand the Voting Rights Act and the content of this lawsuit, that it's not just being leveled against Palo Alto Unified, it's also coming out against districts up and down the state. And as a member of the board in particular, so that transparency and community involvement is increased, I would really restrict waiving the two-meeting rule unless it was absolutely urgent and necessary. I find sometimes we do that at the convenience, the more expedient for the board, and it has a huge side effect, which is that the community misses out on the opportunity to hear and see what is being presented, to comment and take action and speak out with regard to that. So that's one thing I would do to really improve the transparency on issues such as the voting rights.
So first on the California Voting Rights Act, this is actually on the board's public agenda for Tuesday, so I encourage you to come and listen. We're going to have one of the board's attorneys explain the legal situation and give the opportunity to the public to comment. It was important, frankly, for the board to have a discussion about the legal context for this before having that public discussion, to make sure that we didn't have the public discussion in a way that produced a problem for the board's legal position. In general, I have been a strong advocate of transparency. You know, for example, on the OCR matters, the previous board met in closed session in worst times, this board met in a closed session no times, and we had a complete transparent public report on that. In terms of the two-meeting rule, I would just point out that PUSD is the only body, as far as I know, in the state of California that has a two-meeting rule. I hope we have a chance to go into that at some point, but I don't actually think that that's a critical tool for transparency.
With regards to the CVRA lawsuit, I think the board, the district, does need to prioritize transparency, and that seems sort of a, kind of a wishy-washy statement, but it really does come down to what are our priorities as a board and a district? And if we say that our priority is transparency, then that means that we're going to take every step that we can when something like this happens to make sure that it gets out as soon as it should. And especially with this lawsuit, which is one that implicates the electorate, which is how we vote for our leaders, it's one that should be brought to the public's attention as quickly and as rapidly as possible, notwithstanding any issues of privilege or, you know, closed-session legal issues. As soon as practically possible, the issue should be brought up to the public.
That's a good question. And I think what we have a lot to be proud of in our district transparency and transparent governance has not been a strong point. Sadly, the district's approach seems to be to withhold information rather than to disclose it, even though it's a public entity funded by public tax dollars. I know you're bringing up the Voting Rights Act, but you're mainly asking about transparency. There are other examples. We have a labor contract where it's not even, apparently been shared in board meeting materials in past years, even though significant cost impact to the community. There's a recent article about a district settlement that included a nondisclosure agreement and a confidentiality provision, which according to the Palo Alto Weekly is illegal in California for public agencies. So we need to take a close look at all of these practices. And I agree with your question, we need to have transparency.
I think transparency is really important, and it goes back to some simple things like the availability and ease of access to the recording of the board meetings, and the minutes of the board meetings being available and being accurate to a point. Whereas going to the last board meeting, the minutes were discussed that it's not important for non-action items by the board. So you had an hour of people talking about problems with the location of solar panels above their properties, and the only things on the minutes was that these people talked about solar.
Thank you.
Another quick follow-up question for Ken Daubert. You mentioned transparency as it related to the OCR. When the board, the district, released Cozen-O'Connor's report on the investigation into the polysexual assault, names of the involved administrators were initially redacted and then announced in public at a meeting. Can you address the decision to redact those names in the report?
So the district's legal advisors advised the redaction of those names, and we thought it was important to provide the names in public, which we did. And those names were reported in the newspaper and in the press. So I think actually that was a good example of the practice of transparency in the district.
This high school publication is Gunn High School Oracle. We have Ryan Lee.
Hi, everybody. Recently, Gunn has been making a lot of budget cuts through a lot of the humanities-based courses while at the same time promoting STEM programs. For example, Gunn added an AP Computer Science Principles course a couple of years ago while simultaneously cutting funding to the Language Lab. In addition, we still do not offer courses that are considered basic in many school districts, including AP Human Geo and AP World History, that many Gunn students have been pushing for. What do you plan to do about this clear discrepancy between humanities and STEM education in PUSD and specifically for Gunn?
Ken, 45 seconds.
So I remember a board meeting in which I think Gunn and Pali students came to make this case, and I thought they made it very well. The superintendent said that he was going to look into the question, and I believe that both district staff and site staff are looking into it. I, as a board member, am not the best guide about, or the best sort of arbiter of whether the course mix is correct or not. I think it's important that we have courses that reflect student interests, and I'm going to trust that staff and site staff are going to make that happen.
Consistency amongst opportunities at our schools is key, because if students at certain schools aren't having the same opportunity to engage in learning, same opportunity to really find their individual potential as students at other schools, then we're not really fulfilling our role as a public school system. And so first of all, I think we should take a hard look at the courses offered at Gunn and Pali, and I know there are some humanities offered at Pali and not at Gunn, humanities APs. And we should take steps that are needed to take to actually rectify that situation so students at Gunn are able to take the same classes as their counterparts at Pali. And I'll leave it at that.
I was also at the board meeting when the Gunn students came and spoke, and they were very articulate, very well-spoken. And what I took from their argument, my reflection was about the adding more humanities AP courses, and that the curriculum in the high schools seems to be a bit more STEM-focused than it is humanities-focused, and that there may not be the balance between the two that would be possibly the appropriate thing based on interest. So certainly, we need to have a balance for the offerings to our students, whether their orientation is towards STEM or non-STEM classes, and look through the lens of doing that so that our student needs are taken into consideration.
I'm not too familiar with this subject, so I'd have to do more reading, but one thing about courses that I think is important is that we should provide courses that aren't necessarily focused on education into the college system and that provide some real-world applications, like how to read a contract or write business letters and stuff like that. So that's kind of an idea I have for important life skill type classes that are lacking in the system currently.
One of the concrete things I would do if elected to the board is work closely with our student board representatives. There are huge discrepancies between the course offerings between Gunn and Pali, and yes, on our Gunn side of town, we've got an excellent robotics team, but we don't have journalism or class blowing to the degree that Pali does, or even American Sign Language as a language offering. So when I talk to Pali students, a lot of times, they don't know about some of the really cool electives we have at Gunn, and vice versa, the Gunn students don't know some of the opportunities that are not available at Pali. So I think as a board member, we would bring those students together to share the best practices, and the two schools can never be identical. Pali just turned 100, Gunn is just barely over 50. But we can start learning from each other and collaborating in ways that will make the students have more fulfilling options in their academics.
Thank you, Warren. I mean, thank you, Ryan. Next up is from Verity Magazine, Warren Wagner.
So Pali has focused a lot on standardizing curriculum among teachers within the same course. This has led to a few teachers being forced to change how they grade and how they assign material. Gunn students, on the other hand, have expressed concerns about an excess of teacher variance and subjectivity in grading. Do you believe that this focus on grading standardization helps students stay on equal footing, or does it trample on teachers' creativity and individual styles? What would you change, if anything?
Shonik.
So consistency is not the same as uniformity. Consistency is important, as I said, not uniformity. So we really need to do everything we can to support teachers, to give them that discretion that allows them, or at least empowers them, to engage with students in a way that will support the students the best. That's key. At the same time, we do need to have certain benchmarks so that students are being supported, because there's a lot more than a single class in a student's life. They have to meet certain requirements, they have to make sure they get certain grades, they have to meet certain state and UC requirements or other school requirements. So I think that it's hard to find a balance there, but we should be trending towards providing institutional support for teachers to meet the benchmark without taking away the uniqueness that allows them to engage their students in the process of learning.
I think that's a very good question, a tough question, because while I'm sure the teachers want and need flexibility to be able to pursue instructional strategies and working with their students, on the other hand, of course, as a parent of a child who's graduated now, certainly, we heard from many other parents complaints about how one course is different than another, is handled differently than another, even though it's the same exact course, more homework load in one than the other, different grading policy being tougher than the other. And of course, with students going off to college and worried about grades and such, feeling as though they were somehow disadvantaged by being in one course versus another, that is a very tough thing. So some consistency obviously would be welcome, but certainly understand how the teachers would want to have flexibility at the same time.
I want to say that I really like what Shonik said, and that I think English is a great example where you have multiple different classes that you can take that count as credits. And so you can have teacher creativity, but you need to have some sort of standard that everything is graded fairly and that is graded consistently. And so I think that these two points are not at odds with each other, and that you can happily satisfy both of these conditions.
The grading consistency is the most important piece of what you're asking, I believe, the fairness in how grades are delivered and determined for students. That's obviously critical. The opportunity, I think, we do have and we should continue to support is teacher flexibility, not in what they teach, but in when they teach it and how they teach it, so that it's based on teachers' individual strengths, so that they can leverage engagement in their students. So absolutely, grading should be aligned, and I would champion that strongly, but I would support that teacher flexibility and continue to communicate clearly among the parents and the community members about what's working and what's not, not in regards to individual teachers, but in teaching practices.
So these changes are the result of the goal set by the school board several years ago to create more consistency among classes, and really for two reasons. One is that district surveys, and I think just anecdotally, inconsistency in terms of workload and grading among courses is a real source of stress for students. And second, vertical alignment, so that teachers of subsequent courses can know what students are going to be prepared to do based on the course that they took. Those were really the goals of that work, and it's been pursued across Gunn and Pali. And I think that one, in addition to consistency, one positive benefit is that the mechanism for doing this is to bring teachers together in professional learning communities to talk about how to make this alignment happen, and that just produces more professional, you know, interaction, which is good for students as well.
Thank you.
One follow-up question for any candidate who wishes to jump in on this. I think Warren's question speaks to a gap in practice, that there are these ideas of alignment, but in practice, it's not happening. Is there a specific mechanism or direction that the board should give to bring all teachers together in this ideal of consistency, creativity, but also common reading practices?
Well, this work is really what's happening. Sherina O'Facko is the Chief Academic Officer for Secondary Education, is engaged in a process, and it's a long process because it requires deep professional conversations about how to do exactly what you're suggesting. So I think that's exactly the course that we're on.
I would just add that at the school sites, the principals and their staff need to work closely with the instructional supervisors, who in turn work closely with the teachers in those departments, because what we're sometimes seeing at the high schools is that there's inconsistency at the instructional supervisor level. So yes, it comes from the board and the district office, but it also comes with clear communication throughout the levels of administration at the schools, and with the amount of turnover that we've had, that's been really difficult to do at our two high schools, particularly at Gunn.
On a district level, making sure that we're sharing best practices among schools is key. And on a departmental level, being able to provide swift and actionable feedback to teachers so that they are supported in making sure they're following what those best practices are without losing that, you know, that individuality that really makes teachers so special.
Thank you. Alex and Kathy.
I think what I wanted to add to that is that to make sure that our students come first, that it would be important to try to make progress with what you brought up about inconsistency while keeping creativity.
Thank you. From the Pali Voice, we have Nisha McNeilus.
Hi, everyone. In the first full year of course sign-ups, since the district moved to a weighted grade system, 406 students, around one-fifth of Pali's student body, are taking a new class, AP English Language, instead of electives that are no longer running due to lack of enrollment. What are your thoughts on the homogeneity now present in Pali's once-diverse English Department, and do you believe previous board decisions on weighted GPA are at play here? If elected, are there any steps you would take to preserve the robustness of the elective programs at Gunn and Pali?
Let's start with Kathy. And 45 seconds.
Okay, 45 seconds. So I support reporting weighted GPAs. My view is that it's simply a student's record. We should report a student's record. It's just one indicator about a student. I've heard a lot of talk about the AP Lang enrollment at Pali, and whether it's due to the influence of weighted grades. However, I understand that there's been a change in the course selection, the course offerings at Pali, and that now AM Lit 11H is only available to the social justice pathway students, which reduces the possible enrollment, or that enrollment of those students naturally might go over to the AP English Lang. Also, interestingly, AP Lit has had a reduction by 26% of students in enrollment, and those seniors would naturally take that seniors who would naturally take that AP Lit may also be moving to take AP Lang. So I think that there are more details to be looked into, and this is not necessarily a reflection of a weighted grade influence, this enrollment.
I'm not too familiar with all the specifics, but I do think it is important to have a variety of courses available to students so that they can have a choice of what they want to pursue or what they want to learn about. And that if you provide lots of variety, students will be able to find something that they're interested in. And if you can get the students interested in what they're learning, they'll be much more successful.
I do support the district's recent decision to report weighted grades from Paly, as we had already been doing at Gunn. And the fact that it is reducing enrollment in electives is a very unfortunate side effect. Elective enrollments do tend to fluctuate over the years. We have an elective curriculum for women's studies at Gunn that I understand hasn't had enrollment and been offered, and it could be because we offer too many APs, but I really don't think that's the case. I think it's more a situation where we need to communicate and clarify to the students, to the parents, and through the guidance counselors themselves, that a happy, healthy, well-balanced child's education would include a balance of AP academics if appropriate, as well as a rich variety of electives. And I would strongly support that those rich variety of electives are well-funded and continued at our schools.
I don't know whether the change in how weighted grades were reported at Paly, and they had been reported in the past as well, it's not as if weighted grades weren't a part of Paly's sort of student life in the past. I don't know if that's affecting electives or not. I think we need to find out, and the easiest way to find out is to ask students, you know, why they're taking the classes if they are. We don't have to guess or sort of work through statistics in order to do that. I think the value is that we want to do two things. We want to provide students with a choice about the classes that they take that reflect their interests. And I think we also want to make sure that they understand the post-secondary world that they're entering into. Fact is that most colleges and universities calculate their own weighted grades from transcripts for both scholarships and admissions. So I think we want to make sure that students have an accurate, and families have an accurate understanding about the role of that weighted grade that's being calculated by the school, which is actually pretty minor. And if there's a misunderstanding there, I think we should communicate that, because I think we want to make sure that students are making decisions based on, you know, facts.
Any policy that disincentivizes students from taking elective courses, from exploring what really drives their passion to learn, is in my opinion, not a great policy. And I came out against weighted GPA last year. I'm on the record. I wrote an op-ed about it. I don't think that it was the right decision for this district. I think that there are issues such as the academic gap, the achievement gap, opportunity gap, mental health and wellness, all of which are implicated in the weighted grade debate. And by talking about those issues without talking about weighted GPA, we're putting a Band-Aid on the wound, and we're not talking about the core problem. So the district has voted for, they have voted GPA, and things we could do are offer weighted options for electives courses, like Advanced Photo and Advanced Photo Honors, which provide for depth of knowledge and still allow opportunities for honors courses in those electives.
Thank you. Starting again with the Campanile, we have Kayleen Nguyen. And this question, look at one minute to respond.
Over the summer, there was a lot of confusion surrounding Palo Alto High School's bell schedule, ultimately resulting in a schedule none of the students were expecting after a year of committees and surveys. What are your thoughts on the process behind the schedule and what happened over the summer? Do you think the current schedule can be improved, and if so, how? In addition, do you believe two high schools in the same district running on different schedules is a problem? If so, what will you do to change this?
Starting with Alex Schardt.
So I think that this is a very unique problem in the fact that it seems simple to avoid the fact that we didn't meet the required teaching time, and that just a little bit of oversight or review, you would be able to check this information to make sure that it is accurate. And I think this is a major problem that the school district faces, is that there's no checking of what we're doing or making sure that we're following the rules. And so I think accountability is a big part of this type of problem, and that I think whether the bell schedule has a certain time or not, we can look at different studies. I'm not too familiar with that. But the key issue, I think, in this problem is the lack of accountability.
Yeah, I've heard similar things when Gunn moved from the schedule to the block schedule as well, that we also lost instructional minutes. It sounds like a simple thing, but it's quite a bit more complex, I think, than we know. Nobody intends to shortchange the students in terms of their instructional minutes. And yes, the process of how these schedules are changed and determined does need to be transparent and efficient, and that's really the challenge. No student, or any parent, or any member of the community wants to put their time and effort into a committee and then say, wait, why did you throw it out? But I think it's important that we recognize this challenge, that we learn from it, so that next time we're doing these schedule changes, which will happen most likely, we aren't starting over from square one and making those same mistakes again.
I agree with that. In this case, the district's auditors gave incorrect feedback to the Paly Bell Schedule Committee about what would count and what wouldn't count in terms of instructional minutes. As I understand it, district staff pressed the issue. They went back to the California Department of Education. They clarified it. They discovered that unfortunately, the bell schedule that the committee had devised was deficient, and so they went back and they created a schedule that is compliant. That schedule is positive in the sense that it does extend the block schedule to a fifth day, which I think is positive for students, and I think what I've heard from students is that that's positive. I am not particularly concerned myself about whether the two schools had different bell schedules, because I think that's a decision that can be left to the site staff and the students and teachers there, as to what schedule fits with the kind of, you know, particular circumstances that they have at that school.
So public information like the law should never surprise us. We shouldn't be blindsided by things like the law, and that's why we need a general counsel in this district. I mean, the fact that we were getting incorrect advice is sort of exhibit number one as to why we need somebody whose job it is to make sure that we're proactively complying with the law, to make sure that our instructional requirements are met, to make sure that, you know, we have proper processes in place for Title IX reporting, and everything else that stems from a lack of legal compliance on the front end. You know, we've discussed this issue for years, general counsel. And at a recent board meeting where this came up, some people said, well, let's just hope that we get it right and not hire a general counsel. We can't just hope that we're going to get it right next time. That's like not getting health insurance, because you hope that you're not going to get sick. We can't do that. So we need to hire a general counsel. We need to take steps to make sure that legal compliance is a priority, so that issues like this don't happen again. Because if we don't, they're going to keep happening, and we're going to keep getting blindsided by them, and it's going to trickle down to the students.
In terms of the bell schedule, the bell schedule that was proposed by the Innovative Schedule Committee was actually approximately 21 days short over 180-day school year. And in that report that they produced, they said that the committee had consulted with both the auditor, district officials, and the California Department of Education. What we saw was that the board didn't exercise oversight also. And so a schedule that was approximately 21 days short was allowed to be put forth. It's unfortunate that the committee spent all that time on it, but it was not compliant. And in fact, Paly's bell schedule has not been compliant for a number of years, actually. Gunn also has had deficient bell schedules in terms of instructional minutes. And so while it's not necessary to have the same bell schedule between the two high schools, it is essential, and it is necessary and required, to have the minimum standard instructional minutes.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Nikki Suzani from Oracle. You have 45 seconds for this question.
Throughout PAU State, and especially with the addition of social media, many students have been participating in something commonly referred to as flex culture, where students brag or post about their difficult course loads and achievements, test scores, and overall academic and extracurricular rigor, as if it was a competition. How do you plan to combat this culture that creates toxicity within students and ensure that students continue to feel welcome at school regardless of the classes that they are taking?
Yeah, you're talking about the stress culture where students brag about how difficult their life is. Yeah, unfortunately, parents do it, too. Adults do it, and it's a really significant problem, and it's part of our culture. So the answer always comes back to one of education, and again, not just educating the students, that they don't have to burn themselves out to the max, but also educating the parents, the teachers, the guidance counselors in our community, and bringing that message down from the top level of our district, that our goal is to raise happy, healthy, well-connected students, not machines that just crank out the highest possible grade. So it comes down to messaging from the board.
One of the reasons that I served on the district's Homework Committee back in 2011, I think it was, seven years ago, and really have been a strong advocate for implementing the district's homework policy and setting, you know, reasonable, rational guidelines on how much homework students should do, is to try to kind of break that connection in the lives of students between the difficulty of their courses and the amount of time that they spend and how little sleep they get, because I think that's a really important connection to break. So to the extent that the school can change our practices so that students aren't experiencing school as, you know, you get home and you start working and you stop it, you know, late at night, I think that we can contribute to breaking the kind of connection that you're talking about.
This culture starts with the board. The board has the power to change the culture, because the board has the power to set policy and vision. And so it's the responsibility of the board to make sure that when the board is exercising leadership over issues, they're doing so exactly with this issue in the back of their minds. We can't, on one hand, say we want healthy, happy, stress-free kids in our district, while on the other hand, supporting policies full bore like weighted GPA that mental health professionals have said have the exact opposite effect. So when we have these conversations, we can't just talk about mental health in a vacuum. We have to really look at the policies we're putting into place that are really leading to this kind of culture, both for students and for parents, in the heart of Silicon Valley, perhaps the most stressful place on earth.
You were asking about social media, right? Student-to-student social media. I mean, this happens on Facebook, too, with parents bragging about how their kids are going to great schools, bragging about their vacations, bragging about their wonderful cars or wonderful houses, or many, many different things. I guess I see this as, you mentioned, as the social media thing, a student-to-student issue. Students could choose not to participate in it, that would be one thing, and not to participate in general, not to take that bait, right? So I guess I don't view this as necessarily a board issue, but I think it's unfortunate to hear it, that there's a toxic culture out there that's placing peer pressure on our students. And if there's anything that we can do to assist with that, of course, we would like to do so.
I think the biggest thing that I can point at as a massive problem is that at every year at the end of the school year, the Campanile posts a list of which students are going to which universities. And I think that this is a massive problem to students that don't necessarily want to be a part of this, they don't necessarily have a choice, because they will contact the colleges or whatever and get this information. And so I think the removal of this publishing of where you're going to college is really important for student safety.
Thank you. Next up, Verity Magazine's Emma Donnelly Higgins. And you have one minute.
In response to the Title IX investigation, the administration and district have, in the past year, rolled out student surveys, mandatory assemblies about consent, and more. How effective do you think these actions have been in getting students to understand the district's policies on consent and Title IX protections? If elected, would you change or implement any different preventative or responsive measures?
I'm really happy to hear that students are getting education about Title IX and education about consent. I think that is a really important and positive step that the district is taking, and I'm really proud of the progress that the district has made in this area. We have a new Title IX compliance officer in the last year. We have investigative staff. We've put dollars and attention into improving our compliance with Title IX and other anti-discrimination laws, which is really about student safety, because really the issue is providing students an environment for learning at school that is safe. I think there's definitely room for improvement, and I hope that students provide feedback about that. I've heard from students, for example, that, you know, having outside speakers may not be as effective as having student-run programs. I think that kind of feedback is great. But I think the big picture is, the district has really taken this seriously and has made enormous progress, and I think your question reflects that.
So surveys are great, only in that they show us what's working and what's not working, and what more we can do. And we've started to do some things, and we're going to continue to do more, and some areas that I think we need to bolster. I break this down into three, three areas: curriculum, culture, and compliance. Compliance, we talked about. We need a general counsel. We need to make sure we're good on the law, both the front end and the reporting end. Curriculum, some of the things that have come into place over the last year, including Comprehensive Sex Ed, which is a big part of Title IX, because it really gets to the heart of the issue, building healthy attitudes and relationships towards self and sex. And that goes to really changing the environment. So I think you can't really be a Title IX champion without really championing Comprehensive Sex Ed.
I'm also happy to hear that the students are receiving education and that there are surveys to gather the student input about Title IX and about consent and about what's happening on campus. I want to make sure also that the students, in case something does happen, whether it's sexual harassment or whether it's bullying a disabled student, that the students know what to do in terms of making a complaint, how to go about making that complaint, how to do it within the district, and that the students would be supported in doing so. Unfortunately, that's somewhere that the district has fallen down repeatedly over the last number of years, and most recently with sexual assault incidents. So I want to make sure that our students are supported in case anything ever happened. Thank you.
I think it's important to look at areas where we can go to get these types of education. And one of the services that I think could be really useful is NAMI, which is a nonprofit that is about mental health awareness, will provide a service, which is an education lesson for, I think it's ninth and 10th graders, that's free, and about mental health awareness and how you can help. And this idea has approached the school board before, and nothing has happened. And so I think it's about priorities and how we need to make sure that this is a priority, because if it's not a priority, nothing's going to happen.
Thank you for bringing up this question regarding Title IX and the assemblies for the students. I met with the RISE Committee just the other day, that's Responsive Intervention for Safe Environments, and it's actually a task force, not a committee. And I believe the other candidates met with this group as well, or at least had the opportunity to do so. And from them, I learned that these assemblies were sort of a mixed bag, that some students kind of thought they were pretty good, and some students thought they were absolutely horrible. So it is a continued learning process for providing that kind of education to students to bring this to light. The other thing that really struck me is on that committee was that all four members were parents from Paly. And we did have a representative from Gunn, but her last child has just graduated from Gunn. It's important to remember that discrimination based on gender doesn't happen only on the Paly side of town, and I'm really supportive of involving both ends of town, both high school sets of parents and students in this conversation as well.
Thank you. We'll have Nisha McNeillis. We'll have Nisha McNeilitz from the PALLI Voice for the last question. This will be directed at a particular candidate.
Yeah, so this question actually has two parts. First, California Ed Code Section 48907, in general terms, protects the press freedoms of student journalists. Ms. Jordan, you have been critical of PALLI's student newspaper, the Campanile, on multiple occasions, specifically regarding its coverage of sexual misconduct-related issues last school year. As a member of the Board of Education, what kind of relationship would you want to maintain with the student press?
I'd like to have a good relationship with the student press. Speaking of Ed Code 48907, that code also says that student publications are required and teacher advisors are also required to maintain professional standards of journalism. So unfortunately, I think in the coverage of the October 2016 sexual assault incident, I'd have to say that I don't think that the Campanile has met that test. Also, I haven't seen the Campanile cover the November 2015 sexual assault incident. I'm curious as to why that's been omitted from the Campanile's coverage. So I do have a difference of opinion with the Campanile about the coverage on that incident. And I have to say that comparing the professional journalism's coverage of it to the Campanile's, there's quite a wide difference.
And then this question is directed at all the candidates. Do you pledge to support student press freedoms?
Please answer in 30 seconds.
Absolutely. Press is under, it's kind of a no-brainer. The press is under attack across the country, and of all places in Palo Alto, where civic engagement and values that are in the First Amendment, freedom of the press, freedom of speech, those are paramount in our community. So yes, I do pledge.
You're asking about freedom of the press and the student press. But press freedom is not absolute. The press is not permitted to libel someone. The press has to maintain professional standards of journalism. The press cannot print just about anything. So press freedom does have constraints placed upon it. And that's the purpose of Ed Code 48907.
I think that the freedom of speech is important, but like I addressed earlier with the Campanile's releasing of the destinations of colleges that students are going to, that there should be some standard for how important is the piece and how it affects the community, like how it can damage the students that are being reported on. And so I think there needs to be a balance.
I absolutely support the rights of student journalists as well. And in particular, I've been urging that the GUN, some of the GUN students that I've been talking to, even though we have only the Oracle and PALLI has a much more robust journalist program, that they should also use their voices. And they can use it through the Oracle, which is our student newspaper, our Chariot magazine, which is being restarted, related to politics, and also writing blog posts and just posting on Twitter. If they have something that they want to be heard, they don't have to have an incredible PALLI journalism program. I encourage them to use their student voice and follow those same, have those same rights and protections as well as responsibilities of student journalists.
I'm proud of the journalism programs at both of our high schools, and I support the right of students to free expression even when I have disagreed with their opinions. I do want to go back to a previous question that Kathy mentioned about points where the district has failed in terms of Title IX compliance. And I want to say that those predate the reforms that I've talked about. They predate the hiring of a Title IX compliance officer and investigator. And I don't want students to think that if they bring a complaint, that it won't be handled appropriately. They should expect a prompt and compliant response. If they don't get that, they should go to their principal. And ultimately, they should go to a board member and complain if they don't feel like they're getting the process. But this has really changed in a positive way. And I don't want students to feel as if that isn't available to them because it is.
Student journalists, I thought your question was very thoughtful. We're going to move into the audience participation section. So we have a ton of questions, excellent questions from the audience. We've also received some through email this past week. We're going to go for about 10 minutes. And so that we can get to more questions, we're going to ask each question of a few of the candidates, not all five at once. We're going to start with this one for Kathy and Alex. Do you think the board meetings should be more interactive? And if so, how? 30 seconds.
I think that the community opinions need to be brought into their discussion, whereas currently, it seems like there's a community opinion at the board meeting, and then they kind of talk between themselves and don't necessarily mention what was talked about by the community member. And so I think expressly acknowledging what is being said by the community is very important.
I think it would be good to have a little bit more interaction if possible. At times, it feels a bit stilted and stiff at a board meeting, even when the public wants to ask questions of an item that's on an agenda that's being presented. That's not really permitted, and no answers are really provided afterwards. So while I appreciate the opportunity for the public to speak, it would be nice to have the opportunity to have a bit more of an exchange.
This is a question for Shawna and Kathy. I'm a student at Palo Alto High School. The amount of things our school has been through is insane. I don't want to hear about how you will, quote, improve education, or, quote, make it safe. I want to know what exactly you'll do to allow me and my fellow students to feel safe again.
Well, that's a hard one. And we should be doing everything we can to make sure students feel safe. I think that starts with, like I said, proactive compliance, making sure that we have processes in place so that laws aren't broken. But then, the real underlying issue is, again, the culture. So I think really focusing in on building an atmosphere that supports every student, that makes sure that when there is sexual harassment or bullying behavior, students not only feel encouraged that they can report it, but in fact, students have a healthy relationship with sex and self such that those activities don't even start in the first place.
Of course, we want all students to feel safe on campus. And that's the reason that I got involved, more heavily involved, 18 months ago. We also want students to feel that they can go to trusted adults on the campus who will then guide them and protect them and follow the laws, policies, and procedures after they have an event take place. So we're all on the same page about students feeling safe on campus.
This is the next question. Alex? Okay. This next question is for Ken and Stacy. Do you believe this district's special education budget, which totaled $36 million in 2017-18, is being used effectively? And if not, what do you propose to do to address that?
So the board recently received, after a request by the board, a plan to, first of all, an assessment of the district's operations in this area and then a plan for improvement. And the board, with my support, funded, I think it was $1.5 million for this year with another $1.5 million contemplated for next year. So the answer is twofold. One is that we can definitely improve our operations in this area. This is something that I have really worked hard for. And also, the board, and as I said, with my support, is putting even more resources into it because this is a critical area for our students' education.
Thank you, yes. I'd like to thank Mr. Dauber for being the current board liaison to the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education and Inclusion. This is the third year that the board has had a liaison to that primarily parent-led committee. And unfortunately, the Director of Special Education said one of the first things she was told under this new superintendent is that we need to do more with less. It's heartbreaking that we're cutting funding for the students in some sense that need it the most. So I would hope that that wouldn't continue to be the case. And this district really has upped its game in the 18-ish years that I've been involved regarding inclusion. And I think we need to primarily really track to success. A lot of times, IEP goals are carried over from year to year, and we lose sight of the fact that our students can make progress and have high expectations for students with disabilities just like we do for all other students.
This is a question for Kathy and Shawna. As Palo Alto schools become increasingly diverse, especially with growing Chinese and Indian populations, what concrete steps will you take to foster unity and cultural competence in our schools?
My thoughts about unity in the community is that all of the voices need to be heard. I think that part of what's caused some issues recently and in the past is that voices have not, I think, segments of our community have not felt that their voices have been heard. So I think it's important for us to listen to all the voices, not just necessarily those who are able to serve on a PTA committee or on a site council or on a PI committee. I think there are voices out there in the community who are waiting to be heard and need to be heard. I also think that while we have a lot to be proud of in our district, we have problems and issues. And to solve those, we can't shut those under the carpet. We have to address them. We have to face those head-on. So all voices need to be heard, and we all have a right to be here.
Unity in the community will stem from representation on the board with respect to the school. One concrete area, we had the lawsuit, the Voting Rights Act, we talked about. Well, breaking the district up to have districted elections is one way to build that representation. It's statistically much harder for younger people, for minorities, and for working professionals to actually run for a board seat because of the money involved and because of the number of doors you have to knock on as prevents people, like me, but like many others, who would be able to more ably represent the diversity of our community from running for the board in the first place.
The next question is for Ken and Alex. What is your view of district versus site governance? What would you delegate to the site level? Do you think the board should get involved when a site struggles, like with instructional minutes at PALLI?
Four years ago, site-based control was a real big issue in the district. And I argued that the district had swung too far in the direction of site-based control. We really aren't talking about that much anymore because I think that we've restored a reasonable balance. All students in the district are entitled to an excellent education and access to the same level of resources no matter what school they attend. That's the bedrock principle. And so we haven't achieved that in the past in all cases. I'm really happy, for example, that the counseling program at GUN is moving towards more teacher mentors and teacher advisors to redress disparity with PALLI. I think the district should guide and support the sites. And in the area of instructional minutes, provide legal resources and compliance resources when necessary.
I think that having some site autonomy is important so that they can feel like they're able to manage things properly. But I think there should also be another thing where, as a district board member, we ultimately would have control and responsibility for any problems. And so if there are any problems that need to be addressed, there needs to be some sort of system that we can step in and correct things personally because we're ultimately responsible.
We're down to our final question. What differentiates you from the other candidates? This is your chance to give us your pitch in 30 seconds. I'm going to start on the left with Stacy.
One word: experience, personal as well as community experience. I've been volunteering in this district, starting with my first child and continuing on, not just in special ed and inclusion, but also in areas of mental health and student well-being. So that is the main differentiator is that I've served on two site councils, yes, PI Advisory Board, yes, PTA Council, yes, PTAs at all three of the schools that my children attended. But what I've also done is worked across the community to coordinate with all families that have a need, a struggle, and it doesn't have to be a learning disability or at all. It could be mental health. So that number one primary reason is experience. Thanks.
I came to the board four years ago after being a strong advocate in the community for student well-being and for schools that really work for our students and schools that put students first. And I really tried hard to work the past four years to do that on the school board in terms of supporting mental health, in terms of supporting a well-managed district, putting the district back on a path towards compliance rather than confrontation on student civil rights, and really a whole host of issues. You have seen the job that I've done. I hope that it meets with your approval. And I ask for your vote in November on that basis. Thank you.
I bring skills and experience as an attorney, a complex litigator, and a perspective as a former student. And I'm also not a parent. And this is actually a good thing because it gives me a perspective that I want my future kids to be able to succeed at any school in Palo Alto. And so I'm motivated to make sure that every school in our district is built up to offer the best opportunities for our kids. And our district needs a fresh voice right now, not just passionate advocacy, but also experience with governance, experience with professional management, strong leadership so that we can actually execute on our priorities. And I believe that I am that voice.
I would hope to earn your vote because I would fight to make sure that our students come first. And I would also fight to protect our tax dollars.